Kind of screwed me up here on thirty-five. So we'll start the meeting, uh, for ten-ten, two thousand and twenty-four. It is about six oh four. We'll start with the pleasantries.
No, I.
Oh. What happened?
Well, I got fired.
Well, then I guess we won't do that.
Yeah, well, first they take care of it.
Well, then, there's the fire fighter. Fire fighter.
Okay, that's okay.
You can tell this has been the fire.
Okay, we'll skip ahead then to item two, the consent agenda. Approval of the invoice registers dated ten-ten twenty-four and approval of the minutes from September twelfth and the thirtieth. So that would be, uh, falling on us, council, because we're the ones who do that.
Did you just like that there? You guys have my shoes.
It's sideways.
It's sideways. Okay, let's hurry.
I'll just. Scott, I'll just defer to you real quick. Is there anything major that there's for the cop for the building or anything?
Yeah, there's a pay for the building for like two hundred and twenty-one thousand on there. Other than that, there's a permit for enough power to, you know, extend the power line to that little station. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
What's wrong? We have to boot the pallet to hell?
Yeah, we have to extend the three phase down the station. That depends about how long.
I heard a quick question on the building. We're just going to go through it. No major disaster.
Moving along.
Okay. You guys have a question?
The only thing we did, we have like all pumps?
Pardon?
More pumps?
Sewer station.
Sewer station.
For how long? The three phase?
Oh, yeah, that's for the, that's for the pumps to upgrade the sewer system.
Okay.
The pumps are here. Power.
Okay.
I didn't see that one. That's the only pumps that look down on this town.
Well, I'll make a motion to pass the minutes for September's meeting and approve the check register.
I'm sorry. Okay, Paul and Taylor, Sean?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Okay. Uh, next item would be the public comment section. I'd like to take just a quick second. Cause I see a lot of people in the audience and offer this gentleman a quick two minutes he's requested. He's the.
I understand that.
From the general wreath across America from last year?
That's correct. My apologies. I thought I was on the agenda for this week, but it turned out it was last meeting that I signed up for and I, I didn't realize. So I apologize to you for the mistake. I would like two minutes in public meeting time. First of all, I'm here to thank you for the support we did last year. When I started this, I hoped to maybe get fifty to a hundred graves decorated last year. We ended up doing four hundred and seventy-two graves last year due to support from you, canvas, uh, this South Summit Cemetery District or whatever. So that's an incredible number. What did I ever dreamed of doing? And yet that's still up to a hundred and eighty vectors of graves that we didn't get covered. So I'm here to ask you if you would support us again. I sent each of you a letter. I, I hope you send it. And, uh, basically anything I'm going to say today would be in that letter. The request for what I'm asking for this year is nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. It's the same amount of money I'm asking from all of the cities. Uh, that would be done in two, two checks. The wreaths across America where you're actually buying the wreaths to run on the graves is five hundred dollars. Those wreaths will actually go on the graves. The other three hundred and seventy-six is to go to local costs that come to support those things. Last year, the volunteers themselves put a thousand dollars out of their own pocket, plus hundreds and hundreds of hours. And so I, I'd like to ask if they can get some money back. And the last thing it covers is if you'd like to, uh, we can put a wreath in here, the, the large ceremonial wreath with eight small wreaths in here. We can make a display right in your city council building here as a memorial. We can stay up for a month or whatever. And, uh, so I outlined every, uh, the cost in here so that you could decide if you can't do the whole thing. You know, what areas you would like to support. And with that, I think my two mixes up, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, I, it was amazing last year. I wasn't able to attend. You wasn't either, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad you're better, so, but it was amazing. I have my husband, um, videotaped it and everything and I often go back and watch it. And it just means seriously, I ask because my dad was a veteran, so I'm all for.
Well, thank you very much. Germany Foreman really stepped up to that. We got the, uh, mountain boxy up there.
Yes, absolutely.
Everybody loved those horses, I'll tell you.
Last thing. How are you doing?
Oh, yeah, I got over it and, uh.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, yeah, all's well that ends well, I guess. I'm still alive. Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, now we'll be back to the public comment section. And this is for anybody that was, wishes to discuss anything that's not on the agenda. Well, am I right in that?
So the only public hearings we're having is the nuisance code.
Yes.
So there's no public comment in, in anything else.
There absolutely are.
If there's anything to say about anything that's not the public nuisance, the nuisance abatement code, that's what I can do it.
Thank you for that. I did not see that.
Yep.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Lori, are you here? I, Lori Haslam would like to come and talk about the meeting that's coming up. Good evening, Councilwoman Lori Haslam at the governor's office. So thank you for the opportunity. Just wanted to take the opportunity to let you know that the government, uh, Congress is proud of all your efforts that you're doing here in the fires. We know that that's a, a big impact on your community and, and we commend you for having a, I was talking about like over three hundreds. People just move into your community. But I did want to announce that on October the twenty-ninth, Ryan Stark's executive director, Foy, is going to be coming to visit Summit County. It's a very informal three o'clock in the afternoon, just get together, any concerns or, or any help with anything that you would like to, um, emphasize throughout Summit County. Would love to have you there. There will be a team from travel and tourism, grants department, strategic initiatives to answer any questions or help with any concerns within your city. Where is that going to be? And we don't have a, a location. Jeff Jones and I have been discussing back and forth, where would be the best place to have it? But he emailed me a couple of days ago. I don't think we've decided quite yet. It'll be coming soon. I just wanted to explain what it was. So if the intention came across your email, you weren't wondering, well, or this is me. It's very informal. It's just more for him to learn about. He's, he's sitting off twenty-four of the, the counties throughout the state of rural counties. And just, you know, letting people, yeah, leave the discussion. So we, we would love to have you. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just a question then. When is the public commentary session on the hotel proposal?
Right now. Right now. So I know there's quite a few. I would just ask, I hope sometime during the night if you could sign the paper so we can remember who is still here. And so we'll open this up. Two minutes to, uh, anybody who would like to speak, come up to the podium, please, and just say your name. Rita.
James Gray, just off the hill on, you know, circle here in town. I just wanted to take a minute to go at least a little bit into some of the qualifications and requirements necessary on a conditional permit. And the perspectives I know are shared by many of us on how this project does not seemingly meet those requirements. And therefore we encourage the city council to deny based upon those terms. In the city code, it's eighteen dash point six five point oh nine oh, standards of review for, for a conditional permit. Specifically, it states, no conditional use permit shall be issued unless the city finds that the application, and then goes into a series of points. I'm only going to highlight certain points that are the ones that I think are particularly noticeably not met. One of them says that the use is compatible with surrounding structures in use, scale, mass, and circulation. And I do not think it's reasonable to believe that a hotel of the size that's been described and proposed meets with surrounding structures in scale, mass, or circulation. It is a substantial building. It is substantially larger than anything there. And while there is new commercial going in kitty corner to it that will alter circulation in the area, that circulation will end during normal, at, at the end of normal business hours. Circulation with a hotel will only continue and be increased by, or will continue after those hours and will overall just increase the circulation in that area. Goes on to say that the use is consistent with the general plan and affects that any differences in use or scale have can be mitigated or have been mitigated through careful planning. I don't believe any amount of careful planning can mitigate the effects of a hotel this size backed up against a residential area. The impacts of that in this particular location are incredibly, incredibly difficult to mitigate. And I'm not confident there actually is a reasonable mitigation plan possible. Uh, additionally, there's a statement in city code eighteen dash four five or point four five, point one five oh, which is buffers, fences, and walls. It states, quote, facilities that require late night customers and activities shall be located away from residential areas to pre, to reasonably prevent disruption of privacy. This facility, if it doesn't require late night customers, then we should be able to reasonably argue that it closes at normal business hours or reasonable version thereof. If it needs to be opened during late night or twenty-four hour hours, then it requires late night activities. Therefore, under the city code, which states shall be located away from residential areas, the specific location for this request cannot fit within the city code. It needs to be denied. It goes on from there to stating there are additional terms, uh, that must be considered when, uh, for a permit or proposing any conditions on the permit. The size and location of the site is one of them. And again, I refer back to the location under city code against those fences and batteries. It says shall. It can't be put here against residential area. Uh, traffic considerations are another one. Existing streets in the area, they're small town rural roads that just, they're not designed. And there's not space around them to enhance them in such a fashion that they can handle this load that this proposal will bring to the area. Particularly being a hotel, particularly being us, the, uh, right there heading up into the UNAS. There's a very reasonable expectation of a high volume of large sized vehicles, trucks and SUVs pulling large trailers during the summer. It's camping. During the winter, you have, uh, snowmobile trailers, et cetera. Those trailers need to go somewhere. And that includes when they're leaving. If we're talking about a couple of trailers pulling out onto Lambert to then get on to the highway there, two of those will maximize the space that's available between the highway and the entrance off of, uh, Lambert Lane. A third one, if they attempt to pull out in any way, shape, or form, even a regular SUV without a trailer, the likelihood of them being partially in a traffic lane blocking westbound traffic, those are all really, really large concerns. Add to that the amount of snow that we see frequently during the winter. And there's no version of street parking available during the winter. If one of those is parked and we have a major snowfall, even if they're, they're going to be halfway in a traffic lane anyway. And then they're going to get plowed in. And so we're just going to see massive chaos for an area that just is not designed to even be hardened against this use. I think my two minutes are probably up, but I will, I'll compile this all and send it as a letter to every member of council. I just want you to know that we understand you are bound by the terms of the condition use permit. But this proposal does not meet them. And it would be unreasonable for council to approve a hotel in this situation. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Nobody else. Good one. I'll stand up. I'm David Sutherland. You have the, uh, Village Drive just right behind this proposed development. Uh, there are a couple of concerns I have with it. Uh, first and foremost, it's not at all a harmony with Francis City Mission State Road general plan, which is to enhance rural lifestyle. It is the entrance to our city, um, and it is surrounded by permanently protected wetland. To have a forty-foot tall building that is surrounded by nothing else except for grass and homes, uh, is not, I think, what anybody in the city wants to see there. Welcome to Francis signed backed up by. Um, the, the proposal, uh, the, the concept plan by the developer is a relatively appealing building. However, it's just too large for the site. Uh, the, the place where it's on the parcel that they offered it to be, or proposed it to be built is still standing water and has been since today. They plowed out the wetland there. Understand they have a full permit to do so. And I'm at the planning commission meeting. The developer representative, uh, stated that, well, that's up to the city to determine if that site is an appropriate place for building of that magnitude. Um, I've never heard the city offer that kind of constructive criticism or feedback to a developer when they're designing their site. Uh, I do feel like this is the inappropriate location on that parcel for building of that magnitude. I also feel like the city needs to do a better job enforcing current code on commercial properties. Uh, we talked in length about, uh, the commercial lighting, uh, policy or, or code and that there has to be down lights and whatnot. But if you look at either one of the storage unit facilities, those lights shine way across the pastures and the people's houses. Those are not enforced to make sure that they're down, um, or doomed after hours. So we're not doing a good job with the commercial we have already. We need to do better before we consider commercial we don't have and haven't developed previously. Lastly, uh, we need to not pass the buck to other governmental agencies. It's repeatedly stated, well, we can't determine or can't enforce a developer to put turn lanes on Highway thirty-two or to widen Lambert Lane outside of city limits. But we continue to put increased strain on those resources. Uh, the Burton Ranch annexation, Harv Ranch annexation, there is no access to either of those developments. It does not impact outside of city limit streets. The only ones inside the city limits are residential streets, which we don't want that traffic on. So we are saying, okay, great. Bring in a hundred homes, put it on this street that's designed for a wing and a half of traffic. Go talk to the county. It's the county's problem. The city needs to step up and say, as a city, we need the county to work with this developer. And we want the county to require more of these developers. Same thing with UDOT. We need to require more as a city for what your residents, uh, are, are requesting.
Porter Spencer, seven oh five, Oakland. I've lived here my whole life and I'm here tonight to plead with you guys to be in opposition of the unnecessary growth and expansion of our small town. There are things that we can do and you guys can do to stop this. You guys have more power than you think you do. You're our elected officials and as such, we would really like, we are most of us are against this. We've made that abundantly clear. I've gone door to door and gotten petitions. We're not presenting those tonight. But we have, we are doing work to make you guys see how opposed we are to this development. Um, we have a development going across the street. That's going to bring in plenty of tax dollars for you guys to be able to work off of. Um, it's way too big and it's just not what we need right there. I hope you guys are willing to put an eye on effort, um, to help. Um, and we have stuff going in that's going to bring in money that we don't really need. And so we've all made it abundantly clear that we don't want this. And I plead with you guys tonight to use your power to try and save our town. Please, please, please try and save our town.
Anybody else? Okay, I don't see anybody else standing up. So with that, um, we'll close the public comment portion of this evening. Moving to item four, public hearings. Have a public hearing to discuss the new nuisance abatement code text amendment. Uh, Katie?
All right, so. Sorry, I went on a different order than what I talked to the mayor about, so just didn't reorganize. Okay, so, um, the city council, if I remember this, that you, we talked to you about the nuisance code and had a diverse of problems. Where in one case it said that, um, any junk, what we, what we define as junk, uh, has to be screened from public view, has to be. In one case, it said it has to be screened or inside a building or closed building. In another place in our same code, it says that you can't have it at all. And so there's that, a little bit of a conflict there. So we directed staff to start working on resolving that conflict. So this is our, our approach of doing that. There was also another conflict where in one place in code, it says you can have a junkyard, but it has to be zoned for that. Another place that said there's nowhere in the city that it's allowed and we can factor out how many things that's zoned for that. So, um, this is our attempt to try to remedy those issues. Uh, the planning commission reviewed this item after September meeting. They're forwarding it to the city council with unanimous positive recommendation. Let's look at the amendment. So the, uh, the definition of junk, I'm not, I still don't love it, but. So I'm just. Code will say junk includes but is not limited to building materials, lumber or metals, discarded furniture, fixtures, or appliances, motor vehicle parts and tires, wrecked or non-operational, unlicensed or abandoned vehicles or trailers, inoperable, abandoned, demolished, or dismantled machinery, boats, and other goods and equipment in such condition of deterioration or disrepair as to be unusable in their existing condition. So we're taking some of the wording from the next part, the unlawful accumulations. Anyway, we're just trying to consolidate it and make it a little more clear, even though it's still. And then the trash and hazardous waste storage section, that also was covering unlicensed or abandoned vehicles. So we have some of that wording up here so that that one ninety section actually won't cover the vehicles at all or the equipment. That's more going to just cover trash and hazardous waste storage, what we're thinking. And then this upper section, the nuisance abatement, that will cover all of those kinds of things. I think we covered, you know, I think we got everything on that list. It's a long list. It's a lot full, but I think that it's pretty all encompassing. So, and then changing what we can, the unlawful accumulations definition. Oh, actually that section of our code, it's not a definition. So it says that it shall be viewed as public nuisance and unlawful to deposit, accumulate, store, keep, abandon, or to permit the accumulation, storage, keeping, or abandonment of rubbish, dump rubbish or debris in an open area or yard on private or public property within the state. All such material shall be screened from public streets and adjacent property or stored within an enclosed building. So discussions with the planning commission, we decided that this was the, uh, most reasonable way forward. Cause I do remember that the council advised us to be reasonable. So if people want to have these kinds of things on their property, then they need to be screened from public view. They need to be in a building. We're not going to tell them they can't have them at all. We just don't want to see it. So that's the direction that the planning commission went with that. This is a public hearing, so we may have a public hearing opened for that. My recommendation is if you feel like this is in the best interest of the city, go ahead and approve it. Feel free to make some modifications. We can approve it with modifications. Uh, you can deny it if you don't want to do this at all, but then we'll still have those conflicts in our code. Or you can table it. We need more time to work on. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, as Katie pointed out and put earlier, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up now. Do anybody wishing to speak on this particular topic?
Are you the only man in this audience? Um, I'm back. So I have noticed I've done a couple of side jobs and stuff like that, hauling junk away and stuff like that. It is really difficult to get rid of stuff here. The three mile landfill is not accepting that junk that's described on here. You have to take it all the way to Hennifer. And Republic Services isn't offering any type of bulk pickups or anything like that. So for people that have this type of stuff that they're trying to screen it from public view, it's really difficult unless they have the manpower and a trailer to drive it all the way to Hennifer to get rid of it. So I think it would be something to think about to try and call Republic Services and try and get them to get bulk pickup once a month or something like that where people can put out this junk that they have that the city doesn't want to see so that they can get disposed of and taken off properly because there's really no other option for people that don't have trailers and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, one thing I forgot to add that I did at a planning commission meeting, just so everybody knows. In Francis City, we're a small city. We have small staff. And so one of the jobs I had there was code enforcement, but it's a pretty small, hard time job. The way that we handle our policy for handling code enforcement in Francis City is that if we get complaints or if the council or elected officials want us to enforce something, then we will. But other than that, unless we get a complaint, we don't really go out and drop our own track and find problems. So if you see something like this around town, I've probably seen it too, but we're not going to enforce it unless it's a complaint. Okay.
Anybody else on this particular topic? Okay, I'll close the public hearing then on nuisance abatement code text amendment, and I'll open it up to council.
The only question, I can even think of is. Is it our discretion what is junk? Like somebody's got an old tractor out in front of their house and it's decoration. Somebody else considers it junk.
Yeah, that's a hard thing because one person's junk is another person's treasure.
Right.
And I've read on code enforcement visits where we've had that conversation where kind of this kind of cool stuff, but the neighbor doesn't think so. So where do we draw the line on that? I don't know how you can put that into code. There's not really, it's so subjective.
Right, so that, I guess that would be discretionary.
So here it's pretty, it's pretty black and white. Whether it's junk or what it's in. You can't operate it if it's.
Right.
Yeah, I, there are some, you know, you could get into some areas where like, I don't really want to force this on the city, but that's what the code says.
Is there a way we can avoid that type of thing? Cause I don't mind seeing all farm equipment and stuff. I think it's cool, but.
Suggestion?
Sure.
Consider a proposal that suggests artistic installations where it's purposefully designed with the landscaping that may force homeowners to have to put a little more effort in saying that tractor's yard art by doing something that purposefully designs it in landscaping. But it does give the city council something to fall back on to say, look, they've put effort into it. This meets our artistic installation requirement.
I also have a suggestion.
Yeah.
If you buy into it, something where, say there is a discrepancy, if it could be up to the city council to vote on it. Say someone does have a tractor in their yard, but it's in a gray area, then you guys might be able to say, okay, I'll, city council members, let's vote on this and see if we can vote to see if it's just junk or not, or if they provide pictures, whatever, that nature.
Yeah, I'm hoping you know, I do like the landscape. You idea it kind of fits purposely?
Yeah.
It's obviously purposely.
Yeah, I'm just worried that it could be arbitrary.
Declaration.
So, or. And like she has his best friend, so of course she's gonna.
Of course, you know. So. Yeah, you know, I have an old, um, it's not even mine. It's Collins's. I have Collins's manure shredder over there that neither one of us have used for years. But neither one of us is going to get rid of it because it has heartfelt, you know what I mean? And maybe when I get those new houses behind me, somebody will be offended by it. So, so I'm just kind of up in the air, my property.
I mean, I think it's important we have code to address issues like this.
It's not really changing so much of our code right now. It does take out, we can't, I think, at all. We just have to have it screened for enclosed. Otherwise it's pretty much staying the same. Just trying to get rid of that.
Okay, I do think it's worth looking maybe even in the future than this or beyond this.
Okay, I do think it's worth looking maybe even in the future than this, or beyond this one.
Yeah, like, I, like that idea.
About something like that.
A plant flower. Now you guys are gonna see flowers in my language.
I have some questions. So just have two quick questions. The, the language right now doesn't say what screening means, um, which I think if we're dealing with arbitrary language. You said, well, I've got, uh, a field fence across that, that's screened, but you can see through that. Um, and then the other thing is, I just have some concern about the financial impact of somebody violation of this. If they've got a five acre parcel from all adjacent properties, you have to screen that. I can do, they're gonna have to put a, you know, ten foot tall vinyl fence around five acres, like... I think that language is maybe a little strong.
Well, this is, again, what we have in the code right now. And in fact, it's actually a little more convenient, because right now, depending on which section of the code you look at, you may not have it at all, so you have to just take everything out. But in this case, we can screen it, and still get, if we get a complaint of it.
Exactly.
Okay. And they won't have to screen our entire yard, they can screen the section that they wanna keep this kind of thing, so...
And I, I kind of agree with the word screen, it's ambiguous. Like, window screen, or you want something solid, you want something where, to me, you're trying to height.
Yeah.
From you, so it should be a solid wall, or a structure of some sort, or a building, or next to trucks. One other truck.
And that's written in. That's right, yes, it is.
Yeah, right. Well, yeah, I, I, this, this okay exists a lot of.
There, there is, but I think the point of this exercise was to just clean up these contradictory areas, not necessarily address and fix every problem that we can think of. So maybe we just need to do that as we come along.
And I like how you fix it up, I think it makes way more sense and... And like, I think we can fix it up. Yeah, if we need to add more, we can do that. If you guys wanna keep working on it, we can, you know, we can go back and, and look at the nuisance code again, but this does, um, we can prove this, but it does kind of take one problem out at least right now.
Right. 'Cause I, I can see this being an ongoing, especially if we do get a complaint out, and then we have to arbitrate that.
Yeah.
Two different views, so it's gonna bring up some other stuff. But I agree with Clayton, at least it cleans up this one area. Okay, everybody good?
Everybody's good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then, from one of you two finding people.
Well, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance.
So, so it hasn't, yeah, we're gonna do that later. So this, this ordinance contains two parts. It's got the nuisance abatement, which is under code eighteen. And it's got the emergency camp ground, which is under code eighteen. So, we're gonna use both codes in the next ordinance.
Okay. And then if I said I only got a password, I'm gonna change my... Okay.
You can tell I'm a newbie, I made that mistake, that's why.
Okay, that's okay, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, dude, it was great.
Okay. So then we'll move on to the next one, which is the, should we skip then?
Well...
The, the commercial RV and go to the ordinance number?
No, no, we have to. We can't round. So we have a couple options, we can do the hotel next, or we can take it out, or we can go to the RV, and then just walk through the other way through. It's up to you. Well, keep the one together.
Just keep it together.
Wants to keep it together, the next one should be pretty good.
Only because I know, uh, Clint, Clint, I was thinking of his last name, we refer to him as councilman. But I know he wanted to be here, and he, he's just late, and he wanted to talk about the hotel.
Okay.
So, then we'll stay in order, we'll do the commercial RV campground code text amendment.
Alright, so you might remember this one from last month. The planning commission's been working on this RV campground code for since April, because we've had some, some kind of interest and people, lots of questions about if they can do this. And we wanna be ahead of it, so that if it does come in, then we're ready, and we have a really solid code in place, so that we can enforce that and make sure they're following our standards. It's too late to try to change the code after an application is in. We have to do it before it comes in, so that's what we're doing here. So, I remember from last month that you tabled the site and sent it back to the planning commission just for them to work on the language about occupancy. So, um, we do have a, they have a ninety day stay limit, and then we just added some extra language, let me go through that with you. So, um, so we, we just tried to kind of make it similar to what they have in Forest Service. I remember there was a comment about that, so we, not exactly the same, but it's kind of the same idea. So, no site located within a park established under the provisions shall be occupied by the same guest or vehicle for a period exceeding ninety days per calendar year. After ninety days, guests and their vehicles must leave the park for at least seventy-two hours before returning to a different site of the park. The responsible party shall keep a record of occupants' names and vehicles, where each site can make these records available to city officials if requested. So, they can, we're just trying to make it so someone can't live there. They have to be living in something that's able to leave and come back, so they gotta take their vehicle with them. You realize you can't just be the guest, but the guest and their vehicle have to leave for three days, at least, and then they can come back to a different site. So... No public hearing on this item, because we didn't have it on last month.
Okay.
Same recommendation as the other code amendment. If you like, it's a good thing, go ahead and approve it, a lot of it changes, that's fine too.
Okay, council, any comments or thoughts?
No, I wanted to think the, um, planning issue group going through, we're doing that, it sounds good and enforceable, so...
Well, you know, I almost always have something to say about everything, so... Just two thoughts. I know, like you said, the point is to try and keep people from within it. You feel seventy-two hours is a long break. Where do we get that from?
So, Forest Service is like two weeks, but they, they can stay at one site for two weeks, then they can go to a different site in the Forest Service.
Okay.
So this is like, okay, you can't just have a regular site. You have to really be able to pick up your stuff, and we, we don't want any sense of permanence there. So I wanna do a pickup, go somewhere else, not even in the same place. Good. That's, and so the seventy-two hours is just like, that's a pretty long time, like three days, it's a long weekend.
And then the other question I have, now we've discussed, there's a way, or if we were even able to limit how many of these permits we get? Was that ever discussed or talked about?
No.
We don't have like thirty of them?
I don't think that our economics here in the valley would support that. Can't imagine.
I agree, but you never know, right?
Yeah, no, we, I think we did talk about that the last meeting, but there was no correction, it's what we're gonna change.
Yeah, I think we, we decided we could say, yes, we don't have to say yes, you know, it's not in the...
Well, if we started getting inundated, we could just take it out of the code also.
Yeah, it's not in the code, it's maybe happy, agreed to it as well. But if we get so many, we could take it out of the code, is...
Right, if someone came up with an application today, then we would have to let them do that, because our code says this is what you can do, but the traditional is perfect. But if we had like two of these pop up, and we're like, this is enough, then we take it out. That's what we did with the storage code.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for the stor, the, in our storage unit. We had that come in, like, you know, we really don't love these, we don't really want too many more of them. So we're a commercial zone, so we took it out.
Okay.
I think that's what we discussed.
Those are the only questions you have to use these.
Can we put like five, we'll allow five, and then adjust later? So we don't have one of them, and all of a sudden we get six at once, or we're stuck with them?
I can't imagine a scenario where we just get like five applications at once. I think, um, I don't know which, where we put it in there. Do you guys have any suggestions of where you could put that, we could, we could look at?
Well, I'm thinking...
Do you wanna do that?
I would definitely not think we'd want more than two, but... But the only reason I ask is 'cause it's any act one or act two lot is eligible. We don't have a lot of those areas.
Yeah.
Well, I read that too, but then I just read this thing, act one, act two, but... It says here, do we have a conflict, here's a minimum park area, has to contain at least five acres.
Right, they can't do this on like a two acre parcel, it has to go this way.
Well, then I'm confused, 'cause I thought it said up here it had to be act, it can be allowed on act one, act two. Well, you can have a five acre lot that's zoned act one, right?
Yeah.
I misunderstood that.
No, there's plenty of properties in the city that are like twenty, forty acres that are act one.
Got it, got it.
If they were subdivided, then they'd have to have like one of those.
Understood, okay. Okay, um, anything else to discuss? Do we wanna take a look at just a motion to approve this? Do we wanna table it, think about it more, or... Be done with this, and like Katie said, if we get more than one or two coming in and wanna build these things, we could always change our code.
Take it out.
Take it out of the code.
I think that would be the, for me, that's the way I would do it, 'cause I think that makes just no sense, and we don't have to add anything to this.
Yeah, let me ask you, just a day scenario. Ten people all walk in on the same day, and they all apply for a week's code?
As it stands today, yes, and then it says yes.
I can't imagine that.
I don't either, that's why I didn't say, like, you never know.
Yeah, um, if you feel more comfortable, then we could put that somewhere in here, like, you know. So you just choose where we would put that.
I would prefer to be proactive on it, this could, like you said, super long shot, but if I can eliminate that problem, I'd prefer to.
I think you probably want to check Brad, 'cause I think...
That's true. 'Cause that's kind of like the first, the first sort of hurry you get here, you know?
Five in here, and then I come in, why are you discriminating against me?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, are we, are we still able to limit how many, like, short-term rentals we have, though? How is that much different?
I, I...
We actually, uh, we don't do that. I think some municipalities do, but we haven't. So, um...
Well, but if we go back to the example, you put with the storage units, we took that out of our code.
Exactly, we didn't want any more storage units in the commercial zones, so we took that out.
Not to contradict you at all, but I think probably discussion would be had, but...
So if we have ten people coming today, we have to allow ten people to do it.
Right. So how, how hard would it be?
Well, if you wanna put it up, you could, you could condition it on putting it in, uh, with the parole of the city attorney. You can help out. Add to the code that the real issue will maximum of two permits for this type of facility. And if the city attorney is okay with that. We'll just have to write it by head and make sure it's good. I think we could do that, like, if it's a... We just give you that. Right, I think you could. And if the city attorney says, "No, you can't," then we just wouldn't put it in.
Yeah, I don't think you said anything about that when you brought it up last time, that it would be an issue, so...
Yeah, okay. You can, yeah, you can go ahead and add it, and we'll find the best solution. If you trust me to find the best section to put it, then I can do that, we can table it. If you wanna, come back and see what that looks like.
I trust you.
I think we should just put it in, like, not table it again, so... Okay, yeah, another month, okay?
Hey, do I have a...
Emotion?
A motion? What do we call it? You want this, the commercial RV campground code text amendment? To approve that, and with an additional statement of limited to upon the lawyer's approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the commercial RV campground code text amendment with a, with added, um, addition of two only pending the city attorney's approval. Is that right?
Wait, can we have a second?
We have to add the nuisance committee with it.
Yeah, this is...
We'll go to that, the ordinance.
That's the ordinance, this is the text.
Oh, this is the text, okay. Yeah, I'll say, I'll say that.
Well, oh, oh.
So you might have to make a motion for this, or you just have it.
That's, okay.
We didn't have to do that one?
No, just go to the ordinance.
Go to the ordinance, then show them you made your motion.
Okay. And move it down to then either literally B, the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine. It's nuisance abatement, and the RV code text, code text amendment with adding in limited to two... Or does Clint do that?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm making to approve the code text amendment.
Code text amendment, exhibit A. And then Clint will do the RV, then Clint will do...
Exhibit A, okay, carry on, Clint.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the commercial RV campground code text amendment with an addition of a limit of two approvals pending city attorney's. Go ahead.
Second, second. We'll look, Shauna?
Aye.
Aye, uh, am I Clayton?
Aye.
Clint?
Aye.
Passed, uh, mayor of form is absent. Moving on to the next item is the UNTA cabinet site plan. Katie is gone?
He's here.
I, oh, no, she's... At the table.
He left.
I'll let her expand on it when she gets back. Basically, what I read of this and understand it, they just wanna add on to the existing building. There are the fronts thirty-two.
Yeah, it's here, if you wanna have it, I've probably lost you.
Oh, yes? I'm sorry, I'm not here.
Collins, if you want to tell us.
I'm sorry, sir, I did nothing.
Okay, one more question.
I, the, I...
What's your plan?
My plan is to expand the existing building, um, really go back and attach it to that building. And then the, the drawings, I'm not sure if you can hear staff, I placed the absolute on the straight here. So there's the existing building there on the right, and then the building, kinda makes a nail shape on the left. Uh, it's gonna have the shed roof, so it'll snowfall off the back, so it don't damage the existing building. And then to kind of meet the codes, I understand them, that even on the top, it's gonna be staggered a little bit, so that we don't have any, trying to keep away from those long straight lines. So... Yeah, and there's parking spaces, uh, I believe Kate's gonna talk about that a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Stay close by in case you've got questions. You can sit down, I'll go through my report, and then, uh, we might have some questions for you. Okay, so you got a very introduction there. Um, this was, this is good news that UNTA cabinet is doing well enough, that they can expand their building. That's great, um, so they, the cabinet shops are in allowed use in the C-one commercial zone. So, they're planning on keeping their access points the same. They are not planning any significant increase in dust or noise, and as a result of this expansion. This is a, kind of a, a different case than we usually handle, because it's... a building, it's a business that's been in the, in the valley for a long time. And and so we can't require them to come up to all of our standards exactly how the code is written. But we are asking that the expansion that they that they do come into compliance with some things. So let's talk about the parking first. That is one thing that, that we would like to get closer to being in compliance on. Uh, usually it would be discouraged, commercial parking right adjacent to the street, like preferred, the parking was in the back. But like I said, this building's been here since at least nineteen eighty, so that's not something we're going to be able to change right now. Uh, there's also existing fence around the property that constrains access to the back. So so we're going to keep allowing the parking in the front, but we're going to ask that they pave it and that they have a minimum number of parking spaces as required by the code. So our code says they need two spaces per thousand square feet for light industrial office use. And they need one space for two thousand square feet of commercial warehouse storage. This building altogether is nine thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square feet. They've got a mix of those two different uses. And so with that calculation, they need fifteen page parking spaces. And that is what they are showing here on the plan. Let me go through a different view of that. See this, the parking a little better here. So they are planning on the fifteen spaces around the building, all being paved. So it seems like to me that that means code is best that it can, given the current circumstances. The next thing we'll talk about is the parcel itself. It's thirteen point two five acres. And I explained that there is an existing fence and the rest of the parcel is being used for agriculture. So we don't want to disturb that use. So when we look at a site plan for a business, we want to make sure there's adequate circulation and that they have enough parking and that their business fits on that property with the expansion. It does look like it still fits, they still have all the room, the landscaping and the parking and everything they need, so it seems like it means all those requirements and they have started grading in preparation for the addition. Uh, last, the thing, the last thing we'll talk about is architectural design materials. We go back to the actually let's look at this one. That's probably the best one. So in our code, we say that the treatment of building mass materials and exterior preferences shall create an aesthetically pleasing building and site that's in character with proportions of other surrounding developments. And we also want them to have a common theme that reflects the heritage and community of Francis City. And we reviewed those things with the planning commission and city council. In this case, so there's two themes that they can go to agricultural or mountain tourism. In this case, they're going for that agricultural look. They're also matching the same aesthetic that they have on their existing building. So it will tie in nicely with that. They have some facade shifts that see over the garage doors, there's some columns, what do you call that?
I, I forget, it's kind of like charels or something.
Charels, yeah, just to bring it up a little bit. So they're trying to have a kind of nice look on the front, they've got some windows, they have a couple of different materials they're using on the front that do match the existing building, the colors and materials of the existing state. Uh, but the doors and garages are already painted a blue color. And then we also look at the building height, the max height of the addition will be twenty-five point six feet, which is below our four hundred feet maximum in the commercial zone. So that needs to code. They will need to submit a lighting plan, we had to defer to the middle on the lighting plan, they will need to submit that before they get occupancy on the building. Just not sure what those lights are going to look like yet. But they will have to be in the whole cut off since they're a new, this new four inch at least is following a very new code where they have to follow that new code. Planning Commission reviewed the site in another August meeting. They approved the trash storage and landscape plans, so you can see the nice landscaping, but they're going to be adding, the planning commission already approved all of that. And they're forwarding the site plan, parking plan, and architectural design plan to the city council with unanimous positive recommendation. So my recommendation is to approve the parking plan. On the site plan, recommend that you follow the city engineer's recommendation. And you can approve with conditions, table or deny. And then on the architectural plan, there's a little bit of feeling like it this week's intent of code, you can discuss that, and if you feel like it means it, you can approve it or with conditions or table if they need to work, keep working on that design. A public hearing is not required for this item. That's it for me, Scott probably has something to add on this.
Scott. Okay, along with his existing building, he's going to stay connected to existing water and sewer. With painting the parking lot, he's going to have to put in some kind of storm drain, we can actually keep the storm drain on his property rather than put it out on the highway or other key property, so that's he's going to need to submit his plans on that until he gets those down. Other than that, we'll talk about.
Okay, thank you. Council? Thoughts, comments?
I like it, I'm happy for you.
My initial review, I like the architecture, right? Well, the height is going to be well below our forty foot. And I do, glad to see you're doing well enough to expand. It's great for our valley. Shut up. I know. No, that would be, sir. I know.
No, I think it's good, I'm good. Thank you. Good?
Okay, so you're looking to us than to, uh,
Three different.
Three different options.
You can do it within one motion if you'd like, or you could do three separate motions. However you want to handle that.
One will be good.
Should have added it with an exception. So we're looking at the parking, site plan, and architectural design tonight.
Okay, quick question, I like. If you look at the parking plan.
The parking plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, this kind of depends on if it's the scale or not.
Okay.
But is that enough room for those cars on thirty-two back up without getting into the right way?
There's a lot of room, I pull in there daily with my metal head, and there's water.
Then that's the only question I have looking at that picture, so. If it's, yeah, if there's room, then I have no issue. So I'll make a motion.
That's where it's turned parking when you have to.
Right, this is the existing building here.
Yeah.
Right, I understand that part, it just look like if you're in the back of a car, there are your bumpers going to be on thirty-five for thirty-two from that picture, but if it's not, that's not a good representation of the space there, then that's fine, I trust you now, she drives all over this place every day, so.
I do.
So I'll make a motion to approve uh, the parking plan, the site plan, and the architectural design review and a cabinet addition.
I'll second that.
Okay, Shauna?
Yeah, thank, yay.
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Motion's passed, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Collins. You can go ahead and bring a building permit whenever you're ready to borrow from the accident.
Okay, stop. Oh, okay, sorry. Pardon, about forty feet.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, let me just get the next one over.
All right.
Can we get the other room? I am paying.
Oh, what's yours?
The Best Western Concept.
Okay, all right, completely all we're waiting for. All right, so for any of the public that was here, uh, for the planning commission meeting, this is going to be very similar, same information, just to a different audience, which is the city council. So the parcel that we're looking at for this, I think we're all well aware of that is, but just in case you've been looking under a rock, it's the corner of Lambert Lane and it's our thirty-two, on that north west corner. The parcel is ten acres and the site that we're looking at for the hotel would take them about two of those acres. We'll be getting into a lot more detail on what that site would look like, but not too much really, because this is tonight, we're talking about the concept plan, this is the first step in the commercial development process. It is informational only, it's very preliminary, and it's an opportunity for the council and the applicant to exchange information, for the applicant to understand the code requirements, and for the city council to pass some input into the early architecture and site plan design before they get too far into engineering drawings. So uh, just as some background, uh, this parcel is zone C-one commercial. The applicant is proposing a three-story, seventy-two-room Best Western Hotel with trailer and RV parking lots on the site. Hotels are a conditional use in the commercial zone. The applicant anticipates other commercial businesses will also be located on the site, but this concept review is only for the hotel portion, which I had mentioned is anticipated to have a two acre footprint. So as I mentioned, the concept plan is an opportunity for everyone to just discuss it. We'll discuss the process and the procedures a little bit more too, and that's appropriate at this stage. When we're looking at something this high level, we look at the general plan guidance as well as the city code. So the general plan has several statements in it that that apply to this type of development. Our core mission is to provide the highest quality of life in a rural atmosphere through essential infrastructure, public safety, and recreation by allowing responsible growth within the constraints of fiscally responsible government. In the land use vision, our vision is that Francis will continue to be a rural and family-friendly community, preservation of our agricultural heritage, dark skies, scenic views, and open spaces are our priority. Growth will be sustainable, well-planned, and consistent with the zoning map and the general plan. The land use, so there's two policies that support that vision that are pertaining to this conditioned developmental approval on construction of adequate culinary water, sewers, storm drainage, and transportation systems. And commercial usage should be highly accessible and provide adequate access and parking. Then looking at economic development goal, we said that we wanted the rate of commercial growth to be higher than the rate of residential growth. And we have three policies to support that. Improve, diversify, and increase the tax base. Seek revenue growth from economic development activities to mitigate residential property tax increases. Buffer commercial and industrial uses from existing single-family residential areas. And maximize revenues from tourism by implementing a transamper tax. Okay, that's the general plan guidance. The the code. We'll look at a few different areas here that have to do with commercial zoning. The first is lot area and frontage. So I'm going to go to the site plan now, sorry, I'm making it a little dizzy. So. All right, let's do that a little bit more. Okay, so this is our thirty-two here, just to give everyone the bearings. And then there are some future phases, but we're not going to talk about that tonight at all. What we're really focusing is on this part, you can see they're planning some kind of restaurant. Not sure what that is yet, but on the frontage, so that gives you an idea of parking and how that would work. In the commercial zone, similar to what we just talked about with you know, went to cabinet, there's no minimum lot area. It's all dictated by off-street parking requirements, adequate circulation, and property size utilization. The lottery requirements are determined by the planning commission and city council. They have to have at least thirty-five feet of range on public street, the street has well more than thirty-five feet of frontage. So the concept plan meets the requirements for lot area and frontage. Uh, setbacks and heights. Each structure in the C-one zone shall be located at least twenty feet from the property line when adjoining an existing residence. Uh, with the layout that they have, they have some parking, trailer parking between the residences and hotels, so they do have a bunker there. And that's definitely one of the twenty feet. Buildings in the C-one zone shall not exceed forty feet in height unless an express is an exception and the code applies nor exceed the recommendation of the South Summit Higher District. The building height has to be less than forty feet, and they are planning that it will be forty feet or less. We, we might look at architectural elements later, but that's part of the site plan review, that would be later. Again, not sure at this point on that, so it's very preliminary. Next is looking at the architectural design materials. Let's first look at the overall architectural design. So in our code, I just read part of this, but we look at the building mass materials, exterior purposes. We want to have something that fits our agricultural or mountain tourism themes. Uh, we want it to be similar to what's in the surrounding area. So the architectural theme that they're planning on is agriculture with modern farmhouse design materials and elements. This design theme ties in with the Route Thirty-two development, which is planted nearby. The premier cut lodge and villages at Lambert Lane subdivision also utilize agricultural design themes. And then looking at so this is the development plan, diagonal on this, on the other side of the thirty-two. Uh, so the design ties in with that. And then this drawing, we're going to be looking at the materials more. This is the four-story Best Western in Hever, and they overlay the materials onto it, we're not planning that this is what it would look like, but this gives a better idea of materials close up. So they're planning on having black metal roofing, wood siding, sewer siding, having some stucco in some places, rustic lumber in some places. And then there's also this exterior stone. And then having some lighting that's Scottish, the downcast lighting. So that gives you an idea of the design and materials, and then the last thing we'll talk about, I'm just kidding, we have another one. So then next we'll cover buffers, stances, and walls. We go back to the site plan. Our code says that buffer treatment may be required whenever a change occurs between residential and non-residential uses. Additional landscaping and screening may be required where differing uses are to be developed adjacent to existing residential areas, special considerations shall be made to protect the privacy of residents and requirements shall be at the discretion of the planning commission and city council. Because this is a conditional use permit, this will definitely be something that we look at, is what kind of buffers we need to have to mitigate some of the conflicts between residential and commercial. So. Parking is the last thing that we'll discuss. Parking is strongly encouraged on the side for revenue proposed structures, that is what they're planning here. So the restaurant in the front, and then parking on the side in the front, and then on the side the hotel is more on the back of the lot, so so I think this meets the code. The concept plan shows eleven trailer parking stalls behind the hotel and seventy regular-sized stalls on the northeast, east, and south sides of the hotel. Our code requires one space per room and this this means that exceeds it, they have eighty-one total stalls, we, for seventy-two, the hotel we require seventy-two. So this actually exceeds what we've required by code. So my recommendation, and again, I'll just reiterate that this is a discussion item only. There's no motion for this item. No approval is required or given. So prior to this meeting, I hope that you took the time to look through all of these plans, that you're ready to discuss that with the applicant. And you can ask them questions, they can ask you questions in return. And then I'm also directing the applicant at this stage to submit the concept plan to the South Summit. And then I'm also directing the applicant at this stage to submit the concept plan to the South Summit Fire District and UDOT for review. The fire district needs to look at if they can provide fire protection for the buildings and the UDOT will have to determine if the project forms a term or other traffic control measures on 32. Community route. We did hear some public comments already. Public rehearing is not required for this item. We will hold public hearings when we get to the conditional use permit phase of this process. Neighbors of the proposed project were consulted during the planning commission meeting. So in the planning commission, they asked that anyone that's really close by to this project, that they wanted to comment, they could. So we've heard several comments from that meeting. I summarize those comments here. There are concerns about safety with increased vehicles on Lambert Lane. Concerns that Lambert Lane is narrow, many drivers speed and there are several new residential developments already planned with access on this road. Concerns about the privacy and children's safety for the village of Lambert Lane residents. Concerns about transient visitors and proximity to the homes. Concerns about the height of the hotel and hotel occupants being able to see in the windows and yards of the adjacent homes. Noise, especially from the outdoor potential amenities. Outdoor lighting, lights shining out of adjacent properties and noisy dark skies. Increased crime and no police force. Parking overflow spilling onto adjacent streets, parking for trailers and large vehicles. Wetlands and the groundwater present at the site. Dirtwork clearing and piling that has already happened on the site. Weeds will start growing, large crowds of dirt will run on the site and it's untidy. So that is it for me. I think that the applicant does have some things to talk with you about shares here. Do you want me to start the slideshow?
Yeah, let's go ahead and start the slideshow. No, I guess I'll probably just say slide or something and we'll get to it. City Council, my name is Josh Palm. I'm representing the developer to talk to you about the applicant in the room. So as Katie mentioned, we've already had a planning commission meeting on it. It's been a really good process. We, at that meeting, were committed to being open and transparent and there's going to be a lot of information to talk about in this presentation. I think that will help. You know, bring more information to the table is going to help us to be as transparent as possible. Little bit of a backstory, me and my family, we had a family farm in Oakley. So we've gone through, I've driven through Francis at the time into town, now the city, gone through countless times. Every single time through, we stopped at the four-way and then carried on through. No other stopping because there wasn't any more on the stuff. So this development seeks to change that to bring commercial ability and growth into the city. As I mentioned in the planning commission, change is hard, but change is necessary. We believe it's necessary. We feel really good about our development. And we, you know, we're really looking forward to the process of moving into, for even, you know, the actual seminal and conditional use program. So with that, let's dive into the slideshow a little bit here. So just a little bit better shot of the rendering, as you can see. With this development, we are the same developers that are doing the property key corner on Route 32. So we're really able to tie the motifs together. Really make the development look really nice and follow that agricultural theme. Through the comments process we've already got so far, there has been a lot of praise for the design of the building that is a good looking building. Let's go to the next slide. We expressed in planning commission that we want to listen because we do understand that change is hard. We understand that this is a big change to the city. We've committed to be open during this process. When the sign went out, everyone, of course, everyone with their phones, everything went off. That was an intent to be as transparent as possible during the process. We want people to know, we want residents to know what our intentions are. If we get to the end of the process and somebody in the town says, I didn't know that's what was going there, then that would be a failure. Everyone's part because that's not what we want. We want everyone to know what we intend to do here. We cannot address everyone's comments, concerns, any suggestions. But we were committed to opening our ears and listening and taking those into consideration as much as we can. Example of that is initial concerns about the height of the building were brought up and we had it originally at four stories. We brought it down to three stories. There were concerns brought up about zone changes and code amendments. We're not asking for any zone changes. We're not asking for any code amendments. The hotel will be built per code, through the code that's in force right now. Not asking for any special favors. We're not asking for anything of that nature. And then concerns were brought up about what benefit this provides to the community and the benefit of spending your harder money here and visitors spending their money here as opposed to elsewhere. And so in effort to be more transparent there, we've included some information from the feasibility study as we look forward.
Now it's kind of lost. There we go.
Just a few things we'll run through. We want to look at the economic impact, the site analysis. Talk about UDOT, height study, ownership, the wetlands, noise and then parking. And if we need to circle back to the feasibility, we can. So we had an economic feasibility study done on this project. That shows a $20 million directed economic impact within the first five years. That's directly attributed to the hotel. Takes into consideration lodging, bed, taxes, sales taxes, real estate taxes. And then also restaurant, entertainment tips, things of that nature. It doesn't account for any of the collateral economic impact. Revenue from connection fees, revenue from utilities. And also during the construction period, as we do like to use local if we can. The hotel will also provide an opportunity for 12 to 18 positions. To the extent possible, we would like those positions to be filled by members who live in the community. You know, bringing the jobs to the community, that we think that's the way it should be and that's what we'd like to do. This just kind of explains the economic impact and how it's broken down. It looks at, you know, revenue based on the room spending, the jobs, you know. Things bring materials to the hotel. Just kind of explains that in the first five years, the next slide kind of breaks it down into how the feasibility study sees that. So sales tax, lodging tax, real estate tax. Restaurants have entertainment revenue, alcohol tips. These are all very high-level studies. And one of the things that gets brought up is some of those items don't exist in Francis. And so here in the second, we'll show a little bit more information as to why we think that this would, or why these numbers matter even more. So in this feasibility study, we did a site analysis that brings the property based on utilities, visibility, access, traffic counts, zoning, demand. The site got an 84%, which is a great score. It's well within what it should be. So as I mentioned, a lot of those numbers that you saw before aren't necessarily things that are offered in Francis City. And so the next slide will kind of show essentially what we envisioned this site to look like. This is a conceptual build-out, very, very high level. But as you'll see, we have the hotel situated in the middle, 72 rooms. But full build-out, we'd love to see a sit-down restaurant. We'd love to see a bank or a credit union. We'd love to see a grocery store, gas station, convenience store. The site is very large and has ample room for these things. And the hotel is the anchor to that. This is the first step. Mentioned those. What's important to know is this is a concept build-out. Things could change. We had different types of buildings, different types of things could come in as far as economy goes and economic factors. But that's what we envision. That's, you know, that's what we would like to see there at a future time. Whether it's two years, five years, 10 years, we can't say, but that's what we envision to be there. Right now, the first step is the hotel and then we believe the other items evolve in line after that. Showing that as well is, shows our commitment to be transparent. We want you to know what all we plan to see there. With UDOT, our team has reached out to UDOT. We're working with UDOT to find out what requirements are going to be necessary with that site. Whatever is going to be needed to provide safe access and entrance and exit, we'll make it happen. We'll get the traffic study done. Whatever UDOT says it needs to happen, we'll put it in. We did conduct a height study. A lot of the initial concern that we got was that, you know, the close proximity to residents. As was mentioned in the staff report, this is an area that's been selling commercial for over 20 years. There's always been intent to have commercial here with homes around it. The main views of the hotel as it's currently situated, stairs of open space, grassland, weather. The nearest home to the hotel is approximately 500 feet where we have it situated. The nearest home direct line of sight is approximately 900 feet away. This is the view from the approximate 31-foot height of the hotel, which would be the third floor. You can note the distance to the homes around. This is the look looking directly line of sight with the way the hotel would sit. So the next slide is showing the home that are 32, 538 feet. Next slide is 900 feet. So these would be the closest in direct line of sight. During our planning commission meeting, there was a question about ownership. Just wanted to clarify that the land is owned by the hardwood building team. And there is an aline place with the group that was buying and building the hotel. As far as wetlands go, that approved jurisdictional determination, it was granted. The property had the wetlands that were needed and all the permits are in place for the work that has been done to date. As far as noise and crime concerns, so these are some of the comments that Katie mentioned that were brought up during the initial meeting and the planning commission. I should say will not be louder than neighbors air conditioning units. So we'll have, we have to say having five rooftop units. Again, this is very high-level things to change here and there. But all the air conditioning that maybe that could present noise would be located either on the roof or, you know, would be equivalent to what a typical residence would have. It's anticipated the pool would be indoor. We do have a front patio which would be facing SR 32. Quiet hours from 10 to 7 is what we're anticipating. Deliveries between 11 and 3. Windows don't open except for the suite balconies, but we're looking at even removing that as well so the windows wouldn't open. We've got all of our main parking in the front. We've got the trailer parking in the rear. And security and crime was brought up as well as concerns about more so the lack of law enforcement necessarily seemed to be the overarching concern, not necessarily the crime that could come from a hotel. The group that is looking at doing this hotel is the same group that owns the hotel in Hever City. And they have very, very minimal issues with that. It's not to say that it doesn't happen, but when it does, law enforcement can be involved and take care of it. But they have very minimal law enforcement issue. Just want to bring that up. That slide again to show you the view. We are committed to the planning commission for a landscaping plan that will work, provide screening. Whether it's on our property or looking at adjacent landmarks to try to help screen any kind of view that there's a concern about. We anticipate, of course, a landscaping plan that'll work for us and the neighbors. As I mentioned, if it helps to plant trees on the neighbor's property, we can work with stuff like that to make things work. We do anticipate we'll add the buffering and the fencing and screening. Concerns were brought up about livestock. The site will be fenced, so, you know, there won't be an easy access for people to be able to mess with livestock or anything like that. That concern would be completely taken care of because there would be site fencing. We will follow all the codes for lighting and most likely be better than what the code is. We do, we understand the dark sky and its origins and we anticipate, well, we vow to be under what the code is. We will meet it or beat it. So, you know, we don't want a giant beacon either. So we're committed there to meeting all the requirements and to preserve the rural feel. As Katie mentioned on our site plan, we do have more parking than what's required by code. And we're committed to keeping all the parking on our property. There will be no parking on any of the public streets. There will be nothing like that. We did show the first, the full build-out in those earlier slides. But just to reiterate, all of the parking that is required for the hotel will be put in in the first days with the hotel. Just want to show the rendering again. That's what we're looking at right now.
That's it. There's one more.
Yeah, as I said, thanks for listening. We're listening. We're committed to listening. This is high-level still, as we mentioned. You may have questions that I don't have an answer for. That's the whole purpose of this meeting. No action. We're presenting what we would like to see. And then so we'll feedback for both the community and for me. So that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, as Katie mentioned earlier, this is not a public hearing. We did hear from some of the audience earlier in the evening. They gave us their thoughts. So now I guess it's, we just turn it over to us. And discuss some of our thoughts and issues with this. So who would like to start if anybody?
I'll start. I appreciate the slide, the information you gave us. I would like to say that it does look good. It looks like it fits in. Appreciate your willingness to lower it three stories. You know, the majority, with that being said, the majority of my, you know, concerns is relative to the community review, you know, ensuring that we are, you know, abiding by our, the general plan. Dark skies is a big deal. Traffic is a big deal. You know, moving forward with another large project further down Lambert. That's, that had a lot of, you know, there's a lot of concerns about the traffic with that. This will only increase that. But you know, my concerns with this are the, mirror the community's concerns. Thank you.
So I do have concerns that this hotel is in the rag spot from the city. With code 1845150 brought up, it does say late night. Let's see, I can hold it up. I can revisit exactly as I heated earlier. So facilities that require late-night customers and activities shall be located away from residential areas to reasonably prevent disruption of privacy. So that is in code, I don't know, 500 feet away from residential because it is bordered on three borders by residential. So that worries me because no matter what you do, a hotel is going to be a 24 hour a day business. It just is. I have concerns with people parking on the street on Lambert. Lambert's a big deal right now. It's getting a lot of traffic and we need to figure out how best to use it. But, you know, you said people won't park there in the code. Same thing, just a little bit further down in 1845160. This parking shall not occur on adjacent to any public street except Landman. It has some qualifiers that I don't believe applied. But we can read that and how would you keep people from parking on the road right next to the hotel? I know you can tell them in the front desk, hey, you can't park out there. But I would anticipate, and I'm curious, do, do the developer, the owner anticipate using the hotel? Like what kind of guests do you expect?
It's, it's a higher end clientele, $200, $250 a night. It's best western plus. You know, a lot of the demand that should, should show like people coming up smallville through the winter time and things like that. We have plenty of room for parking and the hotel is, is pulled off Lambert and, sorry, 32. We won't have parking on there.
Well, and I, from what I understand, you have 11 large lot or large spaces, right? Trailer space.
That we're showing at this time.
Okay, that could change.
We can, we can have more, we can have less, whatever.
I imagine most of your clientele personally are going to be people with a trailer, Porsche trailer.
Yeah.
Smuggable trailer or something. And it's going to be super tempting to go park on Lambert lanes. You got a straight shot right up the street now on 32. So that's a concern for me, especially with people living right across the street. Let's see. So those numbers on your site plan that you were showing us, those, the 20 million, that comes into the entire project, right? Not just the hotel?
That's the direct impact of just the hotel.
Just the hotel.
Yeah, with the surrounding community.
Okay, all right. So that's not including the restaurants or she's, or all that other stuff that kind of being.
So it looks, it looks like that, but it's since, so that 20 million in five years would be spread to areas surrounding the hotel. So looking at restaurant revenue, we don't have a restaurant in Francis, but there's the Silver Sun Cafe or something of that nature. It's, it's looking at the impacts of the hotel and the surrounding area.
Okay, but that's not necessarily money coming in.
Not necessarily in Francis. You would want to look at the numbers for the, the transit road tax, sales tax, things of that nature. Vows are the direct numbers.
Okay. And then I guess this is more for Scott than anybody. With all the residential that is approved and has been approved and is getting approved and all those types of things. And I would imagine hotel takes more water than the normal residence. Are we, are we, are we good there? Are we going to have problems?
We're, we're set for the next 20 years. And the water, when the sewer is about 10 feet or so, that we're, we need to start looking at doing something. But we're, you know, building the tank and the well. That puts us out 20 years. It depends on how quickly we grow.
Right.
Because everybody come here all at once. Yeah, everything was built up today. We have to do some more stuff. But the growth rates that we had over the past, we're good through the next 20 years, 40 years.
Okay. Those are all the questions and thoughts I had. I guess just to reiterate, my biggest concern is I'd rather see something like this city center than right next to residential. That really, I think that's everyone's biggest concern is how close it is to residential. And 500 feet, 900 feet might seem like a long way, but when you live up here, it's nothing. So those are my thoughts and questions.
I have another question. You, you mentioned a couple of times the hotel being the anchor to the rest of the commercial. You know, we, I think we all agree that commercial is, is key for our, you know, general being in the city. Why, why are you saying that the hotel is the anchor? And if the hotel doesn't happen, what's the, the next step?
I don't know if I can answer what would, what the next step would be if the, if the hotel doesn't go. Just because that's the way that we're looking at, at it. And that's the way that our interpretation of, of the data is, is that the hotel is the key that then allows for other commercial development to come in. For example, sit down restaurant wouldn't work without the hotel is, is the way that we're looking at it. So, and, you know, what's important though too is we do have commercial development in Kiddy Corner across the street. We have 18,000 square feet of, of commercial space that's going to be online as, you know, with the hotels that's being built. So, you know, there is going to be some of that revenue that would be able to go to Francis where most are built out. But at this stage, we don't have that. But we do believe the hotel is the key to unlocking things like such, for example, is having a grocery store or having a gas station or a credit union.
Jeff, thank you. Yes, I know there is, you know, cement and powder in that area for, you know, say a restaurant. But, you know, I can understand, I can see the connection, you know, with the hotel and the restaurant. But, you know, a service station, a market, you know, those are things that are a lot, you know, more desired right there, especially right now.
Yeah.
Can you say anything in regards to, you know, why we're pushing that first instead of the hotel? Because that, that stuff that, you know, citizens of Francis are going to use, you know? There's, I doubt many of us are going to use the hotel, right? But what we are going to use is the marketplace, the gas station. Right now, we're putting all of our money into cannabis. We're going to food town, we're going to the 7-Eleven, all that. Correct. From my view, that would be a lot more strategic for us to encourage that person.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and our understanding is, and I can get back and we can, you know, ask those questions. But that's the way that it's been presented to us as the data is hotel first, then those other things become viable. Sean, are you okay?
Well, yeah, you guys have pretty much covered everything.
Feel free to reiterate. Like I said, we're listening, even if it's the same comment.
We want to listen.
We want to know, we want to know, we want you to know that we're listening.
Yeah, no, I can see that. You've pretty much answered everything and you've really dug deep and went in. I appreciate this and it looks, it looks good. And I just want to reiterate, it has been commercial for over 20 years. I remember when we did it commercial, people that built our houses behind there, I love you all. You're some of my best friends. It was commercial when you, when houses were built there. So, you know, if you're going to be there forever, something commercial is going to get built. And I do understand, I'm, I'm fighting my place right now. I don't want a house in my backyard either, but it's going to be there within a year. So I, I could argue this. Both sides of this situation, and I'm just looking for the best of the city. The city needs commercial. If they want to put a hotel behind my house instead of multi-million dollar homes, let's go for it. I would much rather have that behind me than what I'm going to get. All I'm going to get is a higher cap trade. And I, I don't want a higher cap trade and we do need commercial. And so I could, I could get on this bandwagon for either side of it. But I do appreciate you guys listening and, and the concept that you've done and the, the slideshow. It's answered a lot of my questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I do understand that that is zone commercial. I kind of concur with Clayton. If, if we were to have a hotel in this town, I personally don't think that particular corner is the best spot for it. I do understand that it is a allowable building to be put there. But I'm looking at some of the standards that you're going to have to meet for conditional use. I think you have some great concerns that, that you've got some hurdles that you're going to have to overcome there. A lot of them have been discussed tonight. Gentleman there at the beginning of the night, he brought some up. I can see some downfalls or some, like I say, hurdles in issuing a conditional use that I think you might want to look at and see if you can mitigate those before you go too far into it. But I, my biggest concerns right now, I don't see how you're going to get over the hurdle of privacy. Three stories, people's backyards, people in the hotel. They're not like people in their backyard staring down and people in hotels, not like them staring in their backyard. Okay? And that is one of the biggest concerns, you know, is the adverse impact on the ability of the people living around that area to enjoy their, their property. That's, that's all I can say. I, I, I do understand Francis does need commercial. I'm just not so sure that a hotel on that particular corner is the best use of commercial to be put in there. You've got commercial, let's say you, you mentioned that you've got the property going across the street. It's all commercial. That's going to bring income to the city. So I don't know. I, I do agree we need commercial to help with, with the city revenue. But I'm not so sure that much commercial that fast in that area, especially a three story hotel. It's just my concern. And again, I looked over, I've done some review on my own, some, you know, codes to, or the, the codes that you're going to have to adhere to for conditional use. It might have some hurdles there. Yeah, I just reiterate that I don't think we're against commercial for sure. I don't, I mean, hotels are scary things. 100% true. But I think if we were going to really stay hard about it, there are better places than right there. I think as far as like our, our position here, maybe not, you know, everybody, but everybody's different. But like other commercials would be welcomed and be happy to have it. I think the hotels, the big concern being that close to people residential, especially with it being a 24 hour deal. So. And I'm, I'm not so sure that the minimum number of oversized parking. You'd think you had 11 or 14.
I, I don't think that's going to be enough, to be honest.
So then I don't know how that's going to impact your parking requirements because, you know, you're going to have to take more of your proposal. Other site properties do that. And I'm like, Clayton, I think you're going to get some people to come in there that are going to go into the, you enter this play over the weekend. They're going to, they're going to try and park on that lane if they can. So, and again, I don't know how you're going to mitigate that. You're not going to have 24 hour security. I don't think that's going to be able to go out there and move that. But. So that's, like I, I, I agree with Clint. I don't know if we can look at that concept to do your build out, like it's like say a store, gas station, something of that nature other than the hotel.
Anybody else? And, and as far as trailer parking, things like that, as you can see on the site, we, we have plenty of room. So if, if more trailer parking is desired, then we will make, we'll adjust accordingly, you know? You know, we're, we've got, we've got plenty of room, so. Well, we do appreciate you coming and talking about. I appreciate your feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to Eat Wild Little Park and Foods project. Do we have the skating, Scott? Do you have a bit?
Okay, so we had a, for the nature playground, we got Wild Little Park. We got some grass.
I'll pull it up. Oh, okay.
They can do it in one block. You're looking pretty good. I saw you working pretty hard on that. But that's my stuff.
That's a hard branch. Hard portion. And they're landscaping and they have a smaller lot than they have the cat's base. They're losing their space. And that's the size of the cat. So, yeah. Do that. I got to do that this weekend. And then we got to, we got to do a 15 hour.
You done that?
Yes. Got to go there for a couple, three, three days to take care of my dad's house. Winter ice and strength was just going to all that.
It's just the newest one. I played world series when I get silver medals. I was literally falling because we go up there every year for 45 years weeks of the week with our giant family. I was literally.
Did that hurt?
Yep. Silver medals did, and I would like to see it right there. And I was like, oh.
So that did, what's the name of this? This is all I've got. I'm guessing this is what we have to pay.
I remember I was in the next half of the year. See, so it's still working. We're just covering up. I think we're going to, let's just wrap up. We have one more item. Yeah, I think I was at the end here, so they got to get back in.
Okay.
Okay, so I had a grant to work on the nature playground down Wild Little Park. And we put out a bid. So we put out a bid to, to do the design that we have. And we got two bids, one for 300, maybe $3,120 and one for 1.5 million dollars. So.
Holy moses.
Ben Con's more, I see them more do water, sewer type projects rather than landscape and that probably. So I guess I'm not really surprised. Vancon, Vancon's more, I see them more do water sewer type projects rather than landscaping that probably, so I guess I'm not really surprised. So anyway, so we've got some money, we applied for the recent, most recent tax grant that's going to be, find out in November, what we get. So what we're wanting to do is kind of move forward with this front landscaping and work with them on the costs and get the grants. You know, they're kind of going to get started this fall, hopefully, and then they're going to finish up next year. So, depending on how much money we, we actually get, we kind of, you know, if we get enough to do the whole thing, we do the whole thing. If not, we kind of break that little piece and do that, so.
Okay.
We kind of want to get your blessing to do it forward with these guys, so that we can get them online and start.
Almost, so we break it up, what are the costs and what are the?
Um, ye, maybe a little bit, but the way we tried to do it was we tried to give prices for each thing, so we don't, right now, so we can kind of say this, but, you know, if we do break it up, you know, I don't know, if we.
We broke it up with the nation cost, yeah.
We, we have to find out what I were about ground funding, a little bit.
Do?
Do we know what we got last year or?
Yeah, anyone? So we asked for one eighty, last year we got a hundred and eight. We already have a hundred and, about a hundred and seventy, maybe top of our generation, right?
That's what we have currently.
Yeah, yeah, so we also have a hundred, like, a hundred made from last year. That'll be just for a little bit of different things, maybe for some of this, but mostly for some other parts of that part. So, you know, I remember the park has a lot of these features. The goal is, as I talked about, which is to get a lot of that groundwork done and then how to get funding to have those features. We prioritize, like, we're, we have like three TPs in it, and maybe first we just get one T, we get them all. We get funding, a lot of the other ones, but we do have timelines for the grant, if we don't use it, we'll lose it. So we do have to spend some money.
Well, this is our bid, it's a no brainer, right?
Yeah.
I couldn't argue both sides of this one.
I wish we had one point five.
Yeah, well, you know.
Suzanne will fund it.
I know, but you're a hotel, you're a two hundred million.
That's true. We could build ten of these things.
Um, yeah, I don't have any other questions, the harmony.
No, I'd say once it goes.
Take the motion then, Billy, I have your question. You, you always, you know, you go to the prime lands, the prime lands to run it. Oh my gosh, should we accept the bid, it's from prime landscaping?
Second.
Everybody, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, and then moving on, council business, any council reports? I don't have anything, embarrassing, Jeremy's not here, Claire?
Yep, so, not much for B. Next month, we might see a subdivision code update that's going to planning mission next week, it's a big one. It's in line with what we have to do for state code, most of the changes are for that region. We have a deadline, you have to adopt this new code by December, so, we might see that next month, if not, we'll see it for sure in December. And then, we also have another code that we've been working on, that noise disturbance avoidance. You'll see that likely next month at the planning mission, if we forward on that. One more thing is we have, we were invited to a meeting on Thursday, if you had something to know about that. It'd be great if you could attend, it looks like it'd be a really good discussion, so I encourage you to do that. I think that's, it is a bit different from the meeting that Laurie was talking about.
Yeah, I, I think that's where I'm ready to keep her.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're supposed to.
It's all mad with the city, right?
Dinner.
Some budgeting.
Meet, greet, type thing.
It'll be a really good one for council, just to, you know, be good for everyone more and more about that possibility. That's it, right? Oh, you're welcome, we're not closed.
Okay, Scott, if, oh, you can go back, I'm sorry, you're still in council.
I was only here for this, did we?
We didn't commit to anything.
We didn't commit, he came in, he was supposed to be on the agenda, he thought, tonight was last month. And he spoke, thanked us for last year, he was really excited, he got a lot more than what he had anticipated. So he just handed these out to us this, tonight for us to review and discuss. We didn't commit to anything.
He did all of it.
You're in charge of it.
Yeah. He got all the actions every, except like a hundred?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and forty, and with this new proposal, he, he can get them all, so he's like, we don't.
This is a little bit more.
Yeah, a little bit more of a, I, I don't know, I.
Did he mention, I talked to him earlier this week, and you mentioned, you know, an option of putting up a wreath in City Hall.
Yes, yes, he said that too. That's equivalent.
Deep point here, but I think we'll be.
I think he probably, I think he should be over with you guys, so I don't think so. Well, I need to be open to that.
I don't, I don't think if it's here, it'd do any good to do it, but maybe.
The fireflyers are still there. Well, yeah, they're still there.
One trouble.
Then, no, we can't. Well, we can't in December, we need that.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, now we can move to Scott.
Okay, so, I want to make a question on that, it's round of pumps.
Okay.
It's not for the habit of this session, that was where I forgot, we had some problems with the pumps, out of the sewer pump, the pump that filled out of the field. They got planted with all the duckweed and stuff they got out there, so that was to repair and replace it, that was, so, that was that. There's, they painted the building, the building's come along, they got painted, they're going to start working on the floors, probably in two weeks. Get things finished up, furniture's almost over.
So, what time, when, first of the year?
January, yeah.
Does that, does that mean our, like?
Yeah. It'll probably be, maybe approved before that, but I'm not sure, January, so.
Christmas present, where's the ladies?
And our plan is we're staying within budget, nothing.
So far, nothing's out of our budget. The only thing we did extra so far was make this whole park come out, that was, that was a number ready to do that, it's not a question. Other than that, everything, the office staff requested a window in, break them, it cost one point five million dollars.
Suzanne found the money?
And Suzanne, Suzanne found the money?
Yep, yes, sure.
It was act, it was actually going to be a thousand dollars, like, it was like, fuck, we're doing that.
And I had nothing to do with it.
We just didn't do, they go on a cruise ship and like.
I still haven't been in there, did they lock it up?
No, they didn't lock it up.
Okay, maybe I'll make Ryan and me, we're showing Iowa water.
I don't know, you kind of know.
I don't know, yeah, I said, I was not on it.
You was up?
There's no lights, there's towers, no watch.
I remember I had people last year.
Well, to me, to me, nine is six, it's all seven, so it all doesn't feel like. Let me go, I have a key, oh, okay, sure, it's locked, yeah, okay, I might not do, at least I have one of those. It's a nice number for you, but everybody has.
I've been in there, I, I was in there.
Okay, the last item is the mayor's report, he's not here, obviously, he got, he texted me, or United, he's tied up with the fire on Mary. So.
Are they closing that road?
The, I've been listening to the news, Jeremy did say anything, but they've been talking about the possibility.
Okay, I thought they knew that they're sending people away.
It is closed?
It's closed.
Yeah, it's closed, closed to be closed, yeah, they, the news I listened to tonight, it spilled out, and I'm still, I have no idea what we're talking about, but between certain areas.
Probably more not, we're still stuck.
Yeah, they're getting ready to close it. Okay, with that note, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Everybody?
I, I got a motion.
Make a motion to.